My name is Carl Shanks. I'm here. I'm Mr. Fabro.
Yeah.
Derek Juno. Robert Whitble. Julie. And Julie Castine is here and Mike is here. We have swearing in to do tonight, so if you'll just take your paper and I'll read it out loud and along with everybody else, you can just fill in their names as we go. You're going to sign it. I, Carl Shanks, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Senate of the United States and am faithfully discharged from duty as a planning board member according to the best my ability. Nice word. Cost him four years. First thing on the agenda is, by the way, the attorney won't be here tonight. He's requested that the times that we're having our meeting are kind of bad for him, so he'd like to change it to either the first Thursday or the last Thursday of the month. Does anybody have a problem with the first Thursday of the month at all? You okay? Then we'll change that and we'll get ahold of him so he can make it to our meetings. First application that we have tonight is for Norman Net. It's a subdivision review. Mr. Manette.
Do we need a motion on that?
Oh, yeah. Can I have a motion to change the meeting?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
A motion made by Mr. Fabro. Seconded by Derek Juno. All in favor? First application is for Norman Net subdivision review. Mr. Manette, would you want to talk about your subdivision?
Well, I guess this is the first time around for subdivision in downtown San Francisco, isn't it?
Right.
And I've been out since January trying to buy this piece of land and it's not. It used to be. I had to draw the paperwork and I can't, I don't get it until I get it. The piece of land is 200 on the road front by 250 deep and that's 50,000 square feet. So it's fucking big enough now. I have no neighbors at the time. The lot, the land on both sides of me are empty, so. Mrs. Keel owns all the property on both sides of me in the back of them, so.
Mike, do you?
It's on the Pointe Fair Road, by the way.
Yeah, I see that on the drawing there.
Yeah, he's only required to have 20,000 square feet there. It's a small lot zone with a minimal highway frontage of, I believe, 200 feet here. So he's got plenty of land and he meets all of his own requirements. Basically, yeah.
On these types of, I think we were discussing before, on these types of parcels, we don't need to send this to the county, is that correct?
Right. I spoke to Rodney Brown this week and yes, the county planning board does not want to see any things forward to them. We can hold up the process and they're all going to be done in the house, as it appears. He told me he doesn't even want to see the major subdivisions, so. But we do have to have public hearings under consideration.
Any questions from any board members?
So Bruce is not, excuse me, Mike is not reasoning that everything is in compliance as far as your concern and you've been involved with this stuff?
Yes, the only thing you have to do tonight is the second half of the seeker application.
Well, actually, we can do that.
Not for the public hearing.
Nice thing, obviously, that we should have that second motion. Send it on to the, send it out for, moving on to the next step.
We should have a public hearing.
You can send a motion.
I will put that in the form of a motion.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. To bring this up for review and also to go to the next phase. Second by Julie. All in favor? We'll set this up to go for public hearing. I don't think we, can we get it on Julie by the first? That gives us enough time.
So it can be a public hearing and review of the seeker?
Correct. Okay, very good.
What's that mean by review for the public hearing? I don't know what that means.
We more or less just have to put it in the paper stating that, oh. The only reason it wasn't done this month is because I didn't know that's the way it was supposed to be. When I put it in the paper that we were having a meeting, I didn't put your application.
So you better go on that one?
July 1st. July 1st you should have an answer.
It's a whole new process we're all learning, unfortunately. We thought we had this all figured out with the attorney and at the last minute today, he informs us. Had we had put it in the paper with an application number, then it would have been a legal thing. But the board can't vote on it tonight because it wasn't done. It'll be dry by then.
I don't care. They put it off for four months now.
I know.
Okay, we have another application tonight. Like, take her subdivision review.
Yeah, it's for my mother and father, so I'm packing it there. Okay, basically what they did was they're deeding off their house off the land that they own. They own 125, over 10 acres of farmland. They had it surveyed out, 1.9 acres, the chunk that they want to deed to themselves. It's an owner deeding a piece of land to themselves, basically. It meets all the requirements. They got the 175, I think it's 185 according to deed description. Just 300 deep, those realms building. These buildings are already existing, everything is there. The only thing that's changing is the property lines.
Any questions on the board?
That's in an R1 zone where you need 175 feet of road frontage, which is different than Mr. Manette. It shows a small SL zone, Point Fair. All R1s require 175 feet of road frontage. And they have, I believe, 187 according to their deed description. Should have a copy of it. They're not building or adding anything, just deeding it to themselves.
I have a motion to move this along to the next. Second. Second by Bob. Can I have a call vote, Bob?
Aye.
And I say. Okay, Julie, we're going to put that one on also for the same night. Okay, the next thing that we have on the agenda tonight is site plan review and that's Janod. Janod came in here tonight, but Michael tells us a little bit about it.
Okay, this is a company that bought land across the road. Roswell Beeman is more or less an industrial park. This is Route 9, which is the street out here. This is, uh... This is the malt, the Champlain, North Country Malt is on. North Country Malt is located up here, Route 9 is out here actually. What these people do is they do land reclaiming for mountainsides and stuff like that. They were based in Vermont, they wanted to move over here, they figure it's a better climate as far as permitting. Last year they got a special use approval to do the storage shed, which is a tarred building. It's just one of these plastic covered houses. Have you seen these portable garage things? This was put up last year. When they went to the zoning board, they also had this future warehouse that they want to construct this year as part of that special permit review. And at the time, the discussion was that this right away, if we made here, had to be 75 feet to meet town highway specs. And it was been quite a bit of discussion here in the past concerning this road. When the malt shop, North Country Malt, bought their piece of land here, their deed states that they had a 60-foot right away as an entrance. So basically, that was something that happened that probably shouldn't have happened at the time. But last fall, at the zoning board meeting, they told them that before they could do Phase 2 of this, this road would have to be made into a 75-foot right away. It doesn't have to be deeded to the town or the town would not have to take it over. But for fire access and safety vehicles and things like that, the road had to have been built to those standards. So right now, the right away is an issue. Everything else on here, I've looked at it, I've gone over their plan. They have other top graphical information here. And what they want to do, their lighting, their drainage, stormwater runoff, their ditching. The only problem is this road has no ditches along the edge of it. It's in rough shape right now. They did give us some other little ramp here.
Is he here?
Yeah. I think the little ones are probably a smaller scale, but the big one is some of the writing.
This septic area is proposed, huh? Or is that injury?
I would believe it's proposed because there are no septics in the structure that's over there that I'm aware of. So. Yeah, that's just proposed. But they have their parking in there. They did have a proposal as to what they wanted to do.
Can we stop there? Yeah, eight here, eight to four.
Eight.
Eight to. It's not a battery.
Nine is. This is.
The entrance is.
Where this is over here is up by.
Oh, okay.
Route 9 is right here.
Right. Yep, that's wrong. The legend for the.
No, Route 9 is up here. This 70-foot proposed right away separates their property from North Country Malt. And then this is the 60-foot that's in question right here. It goes up here and then Route 9 is out here. This road right now is supposed to have a cul-de-sac. Turn around and you know, you know, and there's nothing there like that.
But that was supposed to have been done by Mr. Beeman. That really has nothing to do with Janod. Except they got caught up in the, in the road department.
Because that road is non-conforming to state, or excuse me, to the town law now. We're now sitting here with a situation where they can't do anything unless Mr. Beeman moves forward. What's his intention, sir, does he?
His intention is he refuses to speak to anybody about this. He says it's not his problem. It's not really Janod's problem. I mean, I wouldn't say it's not their problem, but when they were issued the special use approval last year by the zoning board, Mr. Beeman was here at the time and he agreed that the road was going to be taken care of and, you know, everything was going to be done according to town specs. And we've given him copies of this stuff many, many times. Now it's, you know, it's a little bit different. But, you know, Janod's position is that, you know, they've already been granted this special use approval once. And now we're going to hold them hostage to, you know.
Does Mr. Beeman own property behind that?
He owns all this land down around and out here. I believe he has another access to Julie's property from the site here.
So that right away goes to his property also?
Yeah.
With stocks for the development, right?
Exactly.
Deals?
Couldn't it be treated as just a part of the driveway rather than a road?
It could be, but the problem is, is once you start doing that and say another business comes in here, now you've got three companies in here. Now if you have, say, a fire or catastrophe or something, you've got to get fire trucks in there. And this road is capable of supporting the trucks or anything, now you've got a life safety issue when you're handling it. It's the job of the boards, this board and the zoning board, to ensure that this doesn't happen, if that's why we have this, you know, playing the laws.
Were they aware of this when they purchased this property and when they started doing this? By the side of 5th Road?
I'm not sure if they bought the property prior to that or I'd have to, you know, look back through.
No. There's a possibility it could be an easement thing that he would keep the road up to park. There's a status in that their contract of buying with them that he would keep the right road up. That would be the number they have to turn.
Well, Mr. Beeman keeps the road because we have a copy of the deed when North Country Malt bought the property up here. He was, they were deeded everything except a 60-foot right away that he kept for himself to get into this. So had we had subdivision back then, this would have got caught. Where everybody wants to go, why would we subdivide? This is a classic example of it.
Actually, Janod shouldn't be held hostage. It should be, Mr. Beeman shouldn't be allowed to redevelop. So that's. Anyone who watches back there until he takes care of that road. Really shouldn't hold that company up to expand. Not after they put so much money into that road.
Like Mike says, somebody drives a fire truck over the culvert and collapses.
I went in there with the highway supervisor last week because Janod wanted a letter, you know, I still want to shape the road who's in. We had letters trying to build our case and we looked at it and the road from about this point down, there's supposed to be two feet of gravel, 28 foot wide in there. You're lucky if you've got four inches of gravel and two feet of mud. The culvert at the top of the road here is all caved in where the trucks are turning out, so.
The town should be responsible for that, shouldn't they though, thank you?
Down in here?
Yeah.
Why? It's not a town road.
That's what I mean, they should be responsible for that. That should be Beeman's problem, shouldn't it?
Right, exactly. But we went to see if the road that was there would be accepted by the town in the condition that it was. There has to be a turnaround down here. Right now, if the town were to take it, the snow piles come through here, there's no place to turn around.
That's right.
So, I mean, the biggest problem is getting ambulances and fire trucks down there. Shouldn't there be a fire?
If this right away is turned over to the town, will they go forth and put a cul-de-sac in it to make it acceptable?
No, not the town. The developer has to do all that work, has to make it acceptable.
They have a specific set of specifications as to what has to be done before the town will accept.
Oh, that's right. They won't throw a money there.
But, you know, their position is, Mr. Beeman, this is private land, it's my land, I'll do what I want with it. But how can you allow development to keep continuing with that attitude? That's, you know.
Which you shouldn't be allowed to do. You shouldn't get any more development down there.
I can remember when Danny Marv bought a piece of property in further away than the old Rainy, you know, one. He was going to put 25 houses in there. He put five and that was the end of it. That's all he could put. Because he had to build roads and he had to put everything in there, so he couldn't, he wouldn't do it. That's the same thing here.
I mean, as far as what they want to do here, they're moving their operations from Swan in Vermont to here. This is going to be a warehouse, office complex, it's going to be a hard freight building. It's not going to be a, you know, a plaza. Yeah, right.
There's no other way into that lot?
I believe Mr. Beeman has a right away somewhere out on this part of this property, but looking at the tax map, I couldn't tell if it was a 30-foot or a 50-foot.
But he originally sold that land. Beeman owned that.
He still does. He's just sold these lots here, this one here, and the one where the North Country Malt is. And this proposed right away here is a 75-foot right away to develop, sell the next lot back here and there's a lot up here. But once you come out to this, it's 60-foot. Now, I talked to Glenn Cutter from the county planning department and he wanted to know why the town has 75-foot where most other places have 50 and occasionally 66-foot. So I started researching our records. In 1974 or '79, the town adopted that 75-foot. For whatever reason. And in 1999, they amended it to have a 20-foot top surface to be blocked out rather than the 16-foot. So this wasn't something that was done just in the last couple of years. I mean, they thought about this in 1979. They were talking with the supervisors, they liked to have nice ditches with even squales, not little ditches that are five foot down and three foot across that are hard to maintain. Apparently, there was a reason for that.
You know, did Janod have an interest in, if Mr. Beeman won't do anything with that road, did he have an interest at all that all that company, bringing a road up to spec?
They had a few scenarios of where they would try to buy the 15-feet on the other side, but in talking with Mr. Renee, that's a legal quagmire, so who's going to pay who for the land? It's a right away, it's Mr. Beeman's right away is what it would end up being. So they would have to negotiate with him and I can't say it can't be done, but it's.
Or really, we're right back to him assuming the responsibility for that road, to bring it up to town spec.
And what about the water?
Well, right now, the way the road is built, there's really no, no ditches that were major. There's a few splooshways, but there are no where's near what they should be. You know, they're getting the water away, but they're not really moving a lot of water. There's no base to the road. A lot of problems with the way it is now.
When property is sold by a private entity like Beeman, do the people that are purchasing this property, do they come into the town to ask you about the properties and ask you about these procedures?
A lot of people do, a lot of them do ahead of time, but some don't. Like I said, I can't remember if they came before they spoke to Mr. Beeman or after.
The zoning board reviewed the application, Beeman still owned the land.
Right.
They were in the process of buying it.
Right, okay, so they did check on it.
And they've been very good. I mean, they've come in here several times to find out what needed to be done. And Beeman said at the meeting that he was going to move town specs on the road.
They've sent us a couple of letters back and forth. Their position now is if this project doesn't go forward, they can't do anything with it. They're going to, you know, collapse their tent, so to speak, across the road and then find another area that they can work with. I hate to see businesses being driven out of town for, you know, things like this, but.
But yet, if we accept this and allow them to go forward, Bruce is here, he can probably, I mean, and suppose there is an incident up at that facility and some emergency vehicle doesn't get there timely, then the town could be held at fault for some liability issue if we couldn't get, because we allowed road to exist that was not there, with no accessibility.
The other thing is, and you see this in the zoning board, is setting precedents. If you're going to accept a road of 60-foot now, the next guy coming down the road is going to need one that only got 45. And how are you going to tell him no when you let a guy with 60?
Who built the original road?
Roswell. Roswell Beeman.
Is there a way you could accept it behind a clause and they're saying that you're not liable for any kind of injuries until the road is brought out on track?
Road was not acceptable at the start.
Right. Right, the road was in the lawsuit.
Even without the width, it's not sound made right, there's not enough road.
Now, I was speaking to someone else on a different note. This isn't industrial commercial we're talking about. There's a few areas in the town where there are private roads that lead to, say, summer cancel. Now, a lot of them are year-round places, but the private roads don't meet the 75-foot specs. But we have houses down there that, you know, we collect taxes from this and that. And again, the fire trucks have to get there, but the roads, in fact, I was on one today, there's some down by.
Yeah, but this happened before the city's rule from last, was it?
You know, that whole area down the lake there.
That's kind of grandfathered in. Roads are in existence, but we can't, but we can't make people conform to the issues of today. We have a transaction that's occurring as we speak to say so. And I don't feel we should collapse this issue for anyone. I mean, you can't just start saying, well, we'll accept that road the way it is and go forward. As you say, then you start setting precedents. The people who have these summer homes or cottages that have turned into houses many times are homes. You're probably living with a situation that you can hopefully, you know, see that they will develop them, but.
Now, their legal representative has been speaking with Mr. Renee about this issue with, you know, I don't know how you want to do this tonight, but I might suggest that you might table it until after the lawyers, what they want to do.
Is there any way to help Mr. Beeman to fix the road?
Actually, we've tried that before. We've tried to have it in before when I was on the original planning board, is when he first came in. And he promised, he promised then that when he was going to go forward with this project, that he would do it and he ever did it. He was just in, I think it was this past fall, wasn't it? When we had a zoning meeting, I was on the zoning board. And he had said that when he came back from Florida, he was going to come before the board and he was going to straighten it out. And nobody's seen him, nobody's heard from him, so.
That was the Janod corporation?
Right, that's correct. So Mr. Beeman really doesn't seem.
Well, Janod certainly has some recourse against Mr. Beeman.
Janod, they own their, their lot.
Maybe we should just let him pull it. Let him get his lawyers out.
He owns the road. Beeman owns the road, yes.
So they, but they, Beeman got his money for the lot.
Yeah. He got his money for the lot. And they developed, well, what you see so far over there, which is quite a lot, they've got a lot invested. And as you can see, they want, it just, it seems that he doesn't want to be responsible at all to make the road conform.
I mean, I don't know what the answer is as far as if you can pressure Janod into pressuring Beeman or how you get around that hurdle, but.
I think they have a legal issue that we can't intervention. I mean, it's up to them. You know, they bought something, they should have accessibility to it. They don't have proper accessibility and it's up to the person.
The town doesn't own the road.
That's correct. I think this is something that we can discuss half the night. I think we should table this and, you know, we have an attorney, Mr. Renee. I think it's up to, it's up to him to discuss his matters with Janod. Shorty, he can speak circles around what we know about it.
Now, the zoning board is going to be hearing their special use approval for this building again. That's next week. Next Thursday. They're supposed to be there then, Janod. So if anybody's interested and wants to hear it, 5:30 next Thursday.
Did you want to put that in form of a motion here?
Yes, I would. I'd put it in form of a motion that we table this and, you know, pending review by our attorney and suggestions, recommendations by him.
Second by Derek. All in favor? Did everybody get the paperwork from them to brief?
Yes.
Well, we need a vice chairman in case something comes up around town over there. Does anybody get your student application?
Get yours, while there.
Well, if nobody else wants to up there, fine.
I'll make Jack's go try it.
Everybody get a chance. Is there anything from the public tonight? Anybody having a comment from the public?
Well, one more question about the situation. Is there any reason why I couldn't have a closing? Not to okay this part of the canyon? Do you foresee any problems with the, whatever it is, not okaying it? You know, I've been trying to get a closure for the last four months. And this is, and what I'm dealing with is eighty-eight years old. And I'm not saying she's gonna pass away, but I hate to wait, I hate to wait too much longer. Is there any, see any problem with closing? How can it close?
I don't see any problem with it, but then there may be somebody from the public. Well, you say...
My neighbor, maybe Jimmy, would give me a problem.
Turn on.
Do it on his own best.
Yeah, you can do it on your own risk. I don't...
Well, that's what I mean. Now, it's important.
I don't really think, you know, we have...
I don't see any, I don't foresee any problem at all. The neighbors are everybody.
I think if we had seen anything in particular, we would have mentioned it to you tonight.
Well, I'd like to start something in like another month. He's gonna turn my hair. He's gonna get my hair greased. Okay, honestly, I'll talk to, I'll talk to my lawyer and see what he says.
Anyone from the public have anything to say to him?
Yes. My husband and I are dating to our daughter a piece of land that they've already built on. And I have the pictures of the house, Chris. I'll read you progress. And we were supposed, we had to come here to the planning board to have it okay, I guess, because, um...
Did you bring a survey tonight or...?
I don't have a survey, and we didn't know whether we really needed one since they've already been there for three years.
We need a survey on the property.
We do really need a survey. See, our attorney was supposed to be here, but I think he's a little late. Yeah, okay, well, as soon as we get a survey, then we come back to you and we, and it should be all finished up then.
It'll be the same process.
It'll be the same process. You come back with a survey. We have a public hearing on it. It should be...
Don't forget to get it back. You don't have that survey.
He has a map.
Okay.
And fill out the application. Make it back by July. You can have a public hearing by July.
Yeah, if you can get that back to us by July, by chance, we could...
By the July first meeting?
Yeah, we could get it in the paper and we could get approved. There's one other thing. Calvin Castine stopped to see me today at my house, and I didn't really wanna talk to him too long over there, but he wanted to give me some paperwork to bring to the board tonight, and I'll read it out loud. I think everybody got a copy of it. It's to the Champlain Town Board and the Town of Champlain Planning Board from Calvin Castine, fourteen seventy-seven Ridge Road, Champlain, New York. The letter is dated today, and the body of the letter reads as follows. "It is the desire of my wife Judy and I to transfer an acre of land to our oldest son, Justin, for the customary family sale of one dollar. The property in question is located at the southeast corner of the family farm, which has been in the Castline family for three generations. However, thanks to the town's new subdivision law, what has in the past been a routine transfer has now become mirrored in unnecessary red tape and totally uncalled for extra expenses. According to this new overreaching law, before we can give our son a piece of family property, we now have to ask the town permission to transfer it to our son. Not only do we have to get permission to give our son this land by paying a thirty-five-dollar permit and appearing before the town planning board, we also have to go through the needless and costly extra expense of having the property surveyed. What's happened to the term 'property owner'? Has the town now absurd total control from the landowners? We already know that we don't really own our land. If we fail to pay our property taxes in a timely manner, the county will seize our homes. We are in real danger of becoming mere rent-paying caretakers of what we once considered to be ours, our homes. If this new law is to stand as is, we property owners can't give away any part of our land without seeking the town's permission and paying the expense of a survey. Let me say that again. We can't even give away our own land according to the new law. The Colony of New York Incorporated, the Town of Champlain, on March seventh, seventeen eighty-eight. This is more than three months before New York became the eleventh state deranged by the Constitution. On July twenty-fourth, seventeen eighty-eight, from that day, two hundred and sixteen years ago, all in our days prior to that date, families have been transferring property to family members without getting permission from the town. There is no dramatic need to change this. Can you imagine that the farmers of the Constitution could ever have envisioned such a thing? They fought the King of England for the right to own their own land. In order to grant a building permit, we already have a lot-size law in effect, so we don't need either duplicating the law to cover this, this law in effect. And as for the survey, let's continue to do exactly what we've been working flawlessly for the last two hundred and sixteen years. Let the bank decide if they require a survey before issuing a mortgage. They know what they're doing. We don't need a new lawyer, a new layer of laws to tell the banks whether or not to issue a mortgage. I imagine that there are, that there may be parts of this new subdivision law that are useful and in some cases necessary to the ordering, the conduction of town government. However, family transfers can and must be eliminated from the law, and steps should be taken immediately to that end, sincerely, Calvin Castine. I don't know if the board has any, anything to say on that, but I will tell you one thing. The reason that we enacted these laws or written that way is because of the assessor constantly finding errors in the, in the lot sizes. On the zoning board, we've run into this time and time again where, I mean, you actually, how do you really know what you have until you survey is what it all boils down to. I just recently bought a piece of land where I live now, and I ended up in a problem where the person thought he owned it and he didn't, and he sold it to me, and I ended up in a big mess, but anyway, after I resolved that, this is a good law, I feel. I don't know if any of the other board members have anything to say about it, but it does alleviate in the long run a lot of problems. Especially Calvin mentions in his letter that let the bank decide it. Well, my feeling is get it out of the way first, get it done, and then when you go to the bank, you don't have a problem. You don't have to wait. But that's really all I have to say on it.
Is there something to add? The town could put out to the public? Because I never knew this till I started buying a piece of land, that this new program has started, that everybody should know of this. Could you put it right up in the paper or something?
The only thing I can tell you is...
About the rules that you have to, now that they have set up, you know, really, it would be helpful to people.
We didn't know by...
Buying property, you know, yeah, you notify, yeah. If it's not, if it's not in the paper, normally, you don't know. I didn't know anything about it.
Well, we did have, we put it in the newspaper, and I know a lot of, we didn't put the whole law in the paper. We put to the effect that the planning board was gonna go into effect and that there were a lot of new rules and changes. We also invited the public to come to the town board meeting.
Notices were sent out, though, when Pat did her, um, sex review. There was a letter in there, but that would only be for people that are residents of the town that own land, so...
That would be for outsiders who don't buy the land here sometimes.
But unfortunately, the only, and this was brought up at the town board meeting the last time, somebody asked, why can't you put it in a bigger print in one of the smaller papers that come around like the Townsmen or...
Rock Cuthbert.
Excuse me?
The three papers, Rock Cuthbert, and everybody...
Unfortunately, you can't do it.
You can't do it?
No, it has to be in the legals, and it has to be done through the local newspaper, which is a legal document, so to speak, so...
So, couldn't you get a reporter to come in and give a news, a story on the new rules and regulations?
Sometimes that's a tough thing. We always get the reporters that come here when, when there's nothing going on, there's nothing important.
It's very controversial.
Colin, Colin, Colin's getting...
Go on and email.
Exactly, right.
Go on and email.
Well, I'm sure a lot of people know, know about this. Talk to them, sure.
Can I ask you something?
Sure.
The land that I'm talking about that we wanna give to our daughter is already assessed. The assessment has been changed already, so we have her portion of the land assessed, and our portion is just that it's a second resident for us right now.
Right.
So, all that part of it is already done, and we know what they're paying. They've had their home in for three years.
But you don't know, you don't have the survey, correct?
But I don't have the survey.
That's the, that's the important part.
Even though the deed is in our name and we wanna deed it over to them, we still have to have a survey done.
Yes.
It's probably, I think what Calvin is missing and what we're talking about here, that's, that's a very fine transaction that you were able to do something with your daughter. Calvin's trying to do something with his son. His father did something with him. But at some point in time, the family relationship stops. And at that point, then you find out that the property hasn't been surveyed, and Mike can speak to this. I've talked to him. I've talked to some other people. And you find that the septic is on somebody else's property, or somebody thought they owned over there from in the old days, from the old oak tree, counted off thirty paces by a six-foot-four man, that now a five-foot-four man is counting off thirty paces. And nothing is in stone. I think the planning, I think Calvin is missing the point that, you know, yes, I think that he's got, it's nice that families can do that, but the families don't always keep the properties. I, you know, being a native of this area, a lot of family farms are no longer in the family, and now it's time to start breaking these up. This is what your parents are doing.
They're giving it to themselves.
And, and what you need to do is know distinctly what you own, so that when it does come to somebody selling something off, we know exactly what we have. And I think we've been very lax in this, and we're trying to put some structure in this. I think Carl, I've read through this. I haven't really studied. He's tried to put together a program that will be lasting for years. We've got a lot of flaws, Norman, because you know that whole, where we lived down in Plain Affair, that whole...
I lived there for a hundred years. Nobody, no, I bought my piece of land when I was down there. I gave the guy a thousand bucks, and he gave me the deed, and that was it. Never had a survey. Never had nothing.
You know, and yes, there's...
And that's a bad way to do business.
Yeah, and I mean, at some point in time, somebody's gonna need a survey when, you know, if you decide to move out of the area, the next person is gonna say, wait a minute.
My thing is, I think, and I can understand where you're coming from. I can understand that, but I'm saying, what I'm saying is to the families, I mean, surveys can be a lot of money, no matter what it is. And my thing is, I think the only time that you should need a survey is if it's being sold to someone outside the family. I mean, I'm not gonna go back to my father and mother and say, well, you told me you were gonna be two hundred and, no, front of you. I don't have it.
You've never heard of a plea review? It happens.
I'm not fighting with my dad.
It's, it's not you. It's you decide something happens and your lifestyle changes two years from now, five years from now, and you sell that house up. Now, the next person comes and says, wait a minute, that property, I thought we owned already over to here. Now, there's disputes going on, and maybe this guy and your father don't quite see eye to eye. If we would have had it from the beginning, then we don't have this, because this is just a tree that starts to grow out in over five, ten, fifteen, a hundred years. If we don't have that in effect, then we're gonna continue to run out and have problems with property.
I'll tell you something about the hers. Sheridan, the trooper I bought next door, I don't know who he is. The fence has been there for fifty years. He says that theirs are shared in the five foot on his property. It's a big hassle now. Big hassle.
When you go to sell, if you ever go to sell your house, when you do sell your house, if you sell it other to, other than a family member, somebody's gonna want a survey. And at that point in time, it's gonna be a lot more expensive to do it than it would be now. Survey gives you peace of mind. The piece of property that you deeded off from, was that ever surveyed?
No, my property is...
So, you really don't know?
No, but the property on the side of me has been surveyed, so we're the only one left there.
But you may, you might find out you've been paying too much taxes for a long time.
Oh, I knew that last time.
We only know that, that it was, it was misclassified for years and years and years and years and years.
But unfortunately, there's no exemptions in the law for...
What do you have for property boundaries?
I have my, the markers, we just have it marked off from where my brother's is, right next, next to ours. And the one after that, before that, has been surveyed up to there.
Is there a tree or...
Oh, yeah, there's trees and there's, there's a...
Stones or pines?
There's a stone wall, and it's the fence and the stone wall, and the markers are made, and they've been made, and we've even got the, on the road, there were markers made for the hundred feet, two hundred feet, three hundred feet as he went down, and we verified with Kenan that did their property the same way the ours should be. So, we know, we know what it is. We know where it is. We're on the farthest end coming up through, so we know, we know how much we do have. And it's just, it's right away, right through Clark Road and back. We know how much property there is there.
Did you open right to Leggett Road?
Well, right before Leggett Road, there's a tape show, has that little piece of land first. From Leggett Road, it's Clark Road, and then from there now, because Clark Road's only three quarters mile long.
Do you know Aon? I love it.
Bruce, have any questions tonight at all?
What you're talking, what you're talking about right now, we had a lady swearing at us. Was that last spring? She, she built a garage, though she had plenty of room to get a car in, but she hasn't bought that much land. She can't drive a car in. But it's our fault because her property line is supposed to be here, but actually, it isn't.
You just said property owner put up a chain link fence right by her garage, and there's literally not five feet of space in the garage door fence.
I can't tell you how much property that we've come across on the zoning board that's been... It's just bumbling.
You know, I realize it's a big expense for these people, but I think really it's a mess.
In the long run, it is.
Yes, I mean, I hate to see us spend money like that, but we'll get it back.
I asked the attorney how many towns in the area had subdivision law. And other than Shaysy Moors, I think it's either Osable or Scarlet Falls, every other town has subdivision laws. So, it's not like this Champlain's come up with something brand-new here.
It's brand-new for the people, though. You have to understand, there are a lot of old town right out there.
And it's new for us. I mean, this is our first meeting, but for the area, I mean, Beakman Town has it, Peru has it, Town of Plasberg has it. The others around here. Shaysy, as far as I know, they're studying it as far as what they're gonna do with it, so I wouldn't say it won't be part of the future before they have it.
Well, once you get the deeds, there's no more arguments. You have no more arguments with your neighbors the rest of your life. Your deeds, your markers are there, and that's it.
Bruce, is that, and that garage is a family issue, right?
If you don't have, if you don't have a deed...
That's my biggest word. Where, where, him and I were at fault because... She has an awful temper.
I could've been on a TV show, Ben, if you...
But it would, you know, if she'd had that survey, then once you put the garage up, she'd have been...
And see, there were a lot of mistakes made there because with no survey, they had to go to the zoning board at the time to get an area variance to locate that garage, and no survey was there, so they just filled out the application, put in what they thought they owned for measurements, and how would the zoning board know without having a survey? So, they granted the area variance. Well, lo and behold, the next-door neighbor had a survey done. He knew where his line was. And when they put that fence up, well, hell, Bruce then.
It's your fault.
Your fault, yeah.
So, our next meeting will be the first Thursday of next month. That's okay with everybody?
Actually, July first, I think.
Excuse me?
I think it's July first.
Yes.
It's still gonna be at...
Fourth is on a Monday, so...
Yeah, it's July fourth, July first.
Same time, though, and Carl?
Six o'clock.
There's nothing else? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
On.